All right. Uh, first item on our agenda this evening is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion. A second. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor please seem to be saying aye.
Aye.
I propose. Motion carries. Any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening?
I mean.
Seeing none, we'll go to petitions and communications. If there's anybody that would like to speak to the council this evening for a period of no more than five minutes, you can pick up one of these white cards at the back of the room and bring it up to myself or the clerk. After you've filled it out, you'll have a chance to do so. Um, first, we have, um, the Kelman Millers, 114 West Florida Avenue, to speak about the streetlights.
Hello. I'm sorry, I'm sure by now you're all sick of our emails, our letters, and our phone calls, and, um, I probably am here on a fool's errand, but this afternoon it occurred to me that one of the reasons we're having all of this difficulty is that you folks are focusing on the road and the cars, and we're focusing on our homes, our gardens, and our lives. And it's very difficult to have a conversation when they're very, very different ends, uh, in each person's mind. We both have a different focus. And I know I can't really change the way you are thinking about things, but I would like to encourage you to at least entertain the fact that there's more to a city than the streets, and there's more to a city than the light poles, and that sometimes a small part of the city does deserve some kind of special attention. And, uh, the people who live in my neighborhood are a mixture of people who teach at Parkland, or at the university, or our folks who live on grants, or graduate students. And most of those people are not, uh, upper, uh, level, um, faculty members, they're not making large salaries, they're not in the engineering department, and they cannot, in fact, stand to have an additional amount of money added to, um, their taxes, or to pay an additional bill. And I feel nonetheless that we deserve as much attention as you are giving to any other aspect of city planning, and I simply wanted to again state that, and, uh, to connect my face with my carping voice on the phone, if nothing else, and some of you have already had to talk with me. And to just plead with you to think about the quality of life. That's what a community is. There isn't anything else. That's it. That's what makes people stay, that's what makes people pay attention, that's what makes people actually commit themselves to the life of a community. And if that isn't there, then there isn't anything. And right now, there are fourteen different families in our area who have not had much of a response from anyone except from the Director of Public Works, for the most part, who has been generous, and kind, and thoughtful, and doing his job, but for the rest of us, we have heard next to nothing. And I did get an email from Ms. Pat, and I really appreciated hearing from her. But, uh, there was next to no follow-through from anyone else, and it's really important to us, this matters, and I just wanted to repeat that to you, and to sit here and look at you and say that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kelman?
Uh, will you, uh, answer questions? Mr. Otto?
We spoke, did we not, on the phone?
Yes, and that was after you told me my phone didn't work, and had sent me an email, and I had to phone you. And, uh, the emails that I sent you, you answered, but never then did respond with the information you indicated that you were going to dig up. There were two or three of those emails in which you did not provide the information you said you were going to. And my sense was that, uh, the conversation about my phone not operating was unusual, and from the point of view that I phoned the phone company immediately, and there was nothing wrong with my telephone. And it just didn't feel good. And additionally, in that conversation, you'd explained to me that using the example of a small community, or a small housing area, on the edge of town with a chip-sealed road and ditches, couldn't expect to have a paved road and gutters without additional cost. And that seemed to me to be what you were saying was, that our housing area, because of its, um, lack of, uh, quality, or perhaps the fact that it wasn't as expensive as some other area, did not, in fact, deserve to have lighting that was more appropriate, because we had not paid for it, uh, when we first purchased our homes. Our homes were inexpensive, was the implication. And it was a most unsatisfactory conversation.
Okay, well, I'm sorry that, uh, I apologize if you were unsatisfied with the conversation. I thought, uh, we concluded the conversation on, uh, a friendly note, and so I was surprised to see your letter, and I was surprised to hear, uh, your comments tonight. Uh, I talked to Bill Gray, who's the Director of Public Works, and, uh, I think that he's responded to you, and, um, I apologize if you haven't gotten the detail, um, that you were expecting.
I got it from Mr. Gray, I didn't get it from you.
I, I understand, but I was working under the assumption, since you had talked to Mr. Gray, that he had answered your questions to the extent that we're able to do that.
I was under the mistaken assumption that in some ways you were to function as an advocate for the people in your area.
That's correct, and, uh, I do that, and I'm sorry if you don't feel like I've acted as an advocate, uh, for you in this situation, uh, but I've tried to, uh, explain, uh, to you, uh, how this situation arose, and I've also, uh, asked Mr. Gray, uh, to talk to you, and it's my understanding, uh, that he's done so, so...
He's done a fine job.
Okay, well, I'm pleased to hear that. Um, but, I guess, I'll just say that, um, I'm disappointed by your implication that somehow, um, I was up to some kind of trickery by claiming that your phone didn't work...
It struck me as peculiar.
Okay. Uh, that is, in fact, uh, what happened when I called, and that's why I sent you the email. It wasn't as, out of a, any kind of, uh, desire to, uh, trick you or deceive you, but, uh, so that we could talk. And, uh, you did return my phone call, and we did talk.
Yes, we did. Uh, as, the reason I think it's peculiar is no one else has had any difficulty with my phone, and as I said, according to SBC, there was nothing wrong with it.
Well, that certainly is most peculiar. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Questions? Uh, next is Wendy Maxson, 116 West Florida, on streetlight replacement.
Good evening, Wendy Maxson, 116 West Florida. I just wanted to, um, let you put, uh, face with my emails that you, most of you received today, anyway. Um, I am still concerned, um, with the streetlight replacement plan that is proposed, and going into fact, and just wanted to, um, hopefully see if there were other, um, you know, other ideas, or a compromise that could be reached. Um, one was that, there is obviously a pole, particularly on the corner, not in the corner, in the median of Illinois and Race, that is identical to our poles, except it has been refurbished, um, painted a nice black, finial still on top. Um, obviously, it has had to go through some rewiring, and if that's the compromise that we need to go through, then I'm, I'm willing to consider that.
Questions for Ms. Maxson?
Just, so, I, can you clarify on this, excuse me? You're saying that that, it's the same, physically, it's the same pole that you have up in front of your house now, and it wasn't replaced with a different kind of pole? Are they supposed to be wired?
I, I'm not certain. When I asked Mr. Gray about, he, um, responded that they are new poles.
Uh-huh.
However, they're identical to the ones that we have. Um, and so, I'm a little bit confused by that, and if we can get new poles that are identical to the ones that we have, then, um, I would feel inclined to, you know, agree to that kind of a compromise.
Okay, and the difference between what you're going to get and what you have now is, there's not a height difference, is there? My understanding is they're the same height, they're the thirty-foot poles, right?
I'm not sure.
Not sure.
I know they are both tall poles.
Okay.
But the, the ones that are proposed are the polished brass parking lot lights?
So it's the, the material of the pole that, that you would like to have changed?
As well as the type of light that is the output?
And how, we talked about that last week, yeah, the illumination, okay. But there's, but it's, yours are sort of beigeish, and these would be sort of more metallic looking, is that? I mean, they're both metal, but just in terms of its look?
Right.
Is that what the concern is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ours are obviously rusted, right now.
Right, yeah, uh-huh. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from Ms. Maxson? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other petitions or communications from members of the public? Council members?
Actually, I just wanted to follow up on that. Last week, folks spoke to us, and then we, we went into our agenda, and I, I think, um, I know this isn't on the agenda, and I, I think they were disappointed that we didn't address it. I'm not, um, I know, Mr. Gray, you spoke to us about this last week, but I'm not clear about what, um, I guess, what is going to be going in there. Well, there's, there's Mr. Gray now, because, you know, when I first got the, the communication from, um, Ms. Kelman, I went out and looked, and I'd walk by there every day, and, and I saw they already have the thirty-foot poles, so I don't understand what's the problem for replacing like with like, and then, um, people were saying that we're not, that what they're getting is to be different, and I'm not understanding what the difference is between what's there right now and what we're going to put in. And I'm also curious, have we already bought what we're going to put in, what we're planning on putting in? Is that the case?
Materials have been already ordered, but I think there's been a confusion, um, in some of our communications with like, with like, or, or what have you. We commonly refer to replacing tall poles with tall poles, short poles with short poles, but they're not equals as far as material types. What's out there currently is steel, painted, rusted, painted steel poles that are decades old, and those are being replaced with spun aluminum poles, so they're definitely a different color, if you will. It's a different material type that's being installed. Um, the height of the poles, I think in front of, um, the block between Race and Broadway, I believe is more in the order of twenty-five or so feet tall. East of Vine, they're on the order of thirty or so feet tall. The new poles are, tall poles are all consistently thirty feet tall, we're not shortening them five feet or whatever to match the height. Again, we're generically saying tall poles with tall poles.
And the, and the amount of lighting is, is greater, will be greater too?
The light levels will be higher than what is currently there in the Race to Broadway such, true, throughout the system, actually. I mean, whether it's on Vine or east Florida, the light levels will be higher, per discussions we had, you know, several years ago.
They're going to get the same lights that are going in on Vine Street, toward Florida north.
Correct. And on Florida going east, and Vine Street, north of Florida, yes.
Okay.
Somewhere light levels to Race Street, south of Florida.
Can this spun aluminum be painted the same way the steel is painted?
Um, not successfully. I mean, if we were to go painting poles, we'd go back, have to go back to square one with our whole program, which started eight years ago. Um, that just was not envisioned nor discussed at the time. Um, but no, it would be defeating to paint these poles, it would, um, it would be highly labor-intensive to try to keep them, if you have them shopped, painted, and inspected differently, that could be done, but again, this is well beyond our decision-making that we had several years ago.
If a thirty-foot pole, we had the, the level of lighting that, that they have now on their twenty-five-foot poles, would we need twice? Last week, you were talking about, the biggest cost difference isn't the, the difference in cost of, of a fixture, of the short ones and tall ones, but the spacing of them, how many you'd need. If, if, if the poles had the lighting level that, um, that they have now, um, would, would it take twice as many of the, of the thirty-foot? I mean, those seem, now seem like it's a brighter light than on, on side streets, but I guess, folks are saying it's not as bright a light as what they're going to get. I mean, is there some way to make it bright enough that we don't need more poles, but not brighter than it is now?
I'm not sure if I heard your question correctly, but...
Can it be not any more light than they have now, or, I mean, is part of our goal to get more light on there, or is it mainly to get working?
Yes, yes, definitely, that was one of our goals throughout replacement of the series lighting, was that the light levels, um, uh, were going to be increased, that, um, to see better the pads and, and vehicles, what have you. Uh, we're going to have a higher light level, not as high as the Illumination Engineering Society, IES recommends, that's a nationwide standard that they put out. And again, we looked at carefully selecting a light level that wasn't going to be nearly that bright, but then again, it was going to be a level we looked at carefully that we thought was, um, acceptable, all things being considered. But I think to answer your question, the thirty-foot poles, if it was to go to a lower hole, mounting height lower than thirty, to go to twenty-five or twenty, in theory, yes, you'll need more poles, and the spacing will be shorter between poles.
But if you had the thirty-foot pole, but the actual light just wasn't as, if it, if it didn't give out as much light?
A lower wattage, maybe?
Lower wattage, yeah, I don't know.
Well, I guess then we're not being consistent with the light level, illumination, and foot candles that we decided on some time ago. I mean, we're trying to keep it consistent on, you know, these collector or arterial type streets that we have, and those have been our, you know, standards we've accepted in certain light levels, and measured in foot candles we've used, whether it be a local street, a collector street, or a minor arterial street, and that's pretty much what we stuck with.
But you could accomplish that, I'm not suggesting we do this, but, I'm trying to understand the counsel here. From Race to Vine, you could get the same total level of light with lower wattage bulbs if you had more?
More of them.
More of them.
Oh, yes.
So if we had more thirty-foot poles, we could get the same light, it's just that would probably be even uglier than...
More thirty-foot poles?
Yeah.
More thirty-foot poles, and, and less wattage in the light?
Oh!
Yeah.
Yes, that'd be much more expensive, though.
Yeah, that's true.
Very much more expensive.
Well, and that's what problems, the expense. Is their level of wattage going to be the same of what's on Race Street, south of...
I'd have to verify that, but that's...
But that's approximately, that's what you're trying to get, is?
Yes.
It's going to be similar to whatever is around there now that, like, Race Streets already, we're not replacing those.
I think the best example right now would be Washington Street, east of Vine.
You said, yes, that's right, you said that last week. Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Chinowith?
I have a question, that maybe, um, Community Development can answer, but you might know, Mr. Gray, um, is it legal for residents to grow vines or plants around the, the light poles in the public right-of-way, so for example, grapes, kiwi, hops, things that are leafy and tend to like to grow high up in the sky? Is that legal, or, and does it cause a problem with the poles at all?
Um, I don't know that we specifically have any ordinance against that, um, it, I've maybe seen that in one case, you know, in my years here, where that's happened, and we didn't go out the next day and cut it down, or whatever, but, um, depending on what the vine or material is, it, it might, you know, leave some marks or, or scarring, but I don't know that we'd have a real terrible problem with that, if, if that's the issue, they wanted to grow some vine material, but, um, I don't think it would interfere with the lighting, if that's the question.
It won't, it won't interfere with the lighting, and you won't cut it down as part of regular maintenance.
Right.
And the poles are just polished aluminum, or, um...
Spun aluminum is what it is.
Spun aluminum. So there's no paint or enamel, or any kind of coating at all on them, that would be injured by plants?
I would have to research that a little, but I don't think it would be, impact that material.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I just, I guess my statement to residents and thinking about this, and also being in different, being, being in Ward Four, Laura in Ward Five, each of our wards has gone through different experiences of having their lights replaced, and having various, um, concerns about there being more light, or, sometimes the concerns was there's not enough light, and now we're happy that there's more light, so we've heard some of these things, and I wonder if one of the ways to handle the problem, if these poles go in, is to, is to overgrow the poles, if you don't like how they look, and grow vines up to them, and otherwise, I think the expense that we're looking at from a city perspective, um, I wouldn't say it's prohibitive, we could decide to spend money on this instead of something else, it's just the fact that we've turned down residents' requests to, to kind of custom-fit lighting to their neighborhood, and I, I guess it's a question of, um, of fairness, as to whether or not we treat a particular residential area different than another residential area based on the request, vis-à-vis a policy that we came up with, so...
Yeah. I mean, just to recap those discussions we had some seven, eight years ago, um, you know, there was some discussion about should we, you know, replace all the lighting with ornamental lighting, you know, throughout those areas that are lit, you know, and, and that would have added millions of more dollars to the project. I mean, we worked carefully at trying to come up with a ten-year plan to replace the lights without increasing taxes, you know, I mean, with the existing revenue stream that we had, and trying to keep all the other capital improvement projects moving forward, which I think we've done a good job doing, and not break the bank, so to speak, and it would have been nice to done low poles, you know, ornamental poles everywhere, yeah. I think, you know, I mean, some people, I think, would say that'd be a, a nice touch everywhere, but we had to draw the line somewhere, and as a council, as staff, we looked at the hard numbers and tried to make it work, and this was our best decision with the limited resources we had.
Pat?
I have one more question. Of course, I just wanted to say, in, in response to that, if, if we could get away with doing it, changing the plan just for this two-block area, and not have, um, other people on other streets ask for it, I mean, I don't know exactly how much it costs, but that's, that, that probably would be something we could swing. The big problem is that it won't be the last place there's requests, and, and, you know, just as Mr. Gray said, we can't, uh, it would cost a whole, it would cost millions more to replace them everywhere. But, um, back to the lighting levels, is this, is it possible to put in, um, house shields on these kind of lights, so that the light goes down to the sidewalk on the street and not back to the house?
I think the shields would probably have, um, next-to-no, um, impact. First of all, we're using a cutoff lens, and if, again, New Washington Street would be a good example, or on Vine Street, and, and there's no aspect of the lens or the lamp that sticks below the fixture that would shield, would shine to the home. It really directs the light well to the pavement, and, and, um, there really isn't much, you know, spillage to speak of beyond the street right-of-way area, you know, within the, the curbs and sidewalk area. Um, you know, there are other fixtures that are semi-cutoff, or, or non-cutoff fixtures that, that have a tendency to, um, direct the light in, in, in a wider direction area, and, and a shield or whatever would, would help. But these types of fixtures, you don't have that problem like you do with the globe. Now, the globe fixture is a little more difficult to keep that from shining directly. Most of the light is angled down to the ground, but some is up in the air, some is horizontal to a front yard, or what have you, but, but these are directed pretty much, you know, to the ground.
So someone's got the bedroom in, in the front of their house, and they don't have light shining in their window now, and we replace their, their poles with the new poles, they're not going to have that light shining in their bedroom window?
The current fix, the current lamp and fixture that's out there now is a kind of a teardrop look to it, and, you know, that disperses light in, you know, kind of in the even, the horizontal direction besides going vertically down, so this is going to direct it more straight down. It's going to be brighter, be more illumination, um, you'll certainly see it, obviously, if you're standing at your front porch and look out the window, but it should not be shining directly into a window, whereas potentially the ones that are now could, because of the type of design that that lamp and fixture is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions about lighting? Thank you, Mr. Gray. Um, since we're on, um, Council petitions and communications, any petitions and communications from council members? Yes, Ms. who?
I had a question. Um, it's been a couple of months since we heard an update on commercial recycling, and I'm starting to get questions again from downtown business owners as to what the status of that is, and I'm wondering if we can get that on the agenda for next meeting.
I think it already is on the agenda for next meeting. Next meeting.
Let me do the punch, then, all right. I'll let them know.
Yeah, also, we're going to have, um, the, uh, I think the contracts for the U-cycle program will be on next agenda as well. So we'll have multiple recycling...
The all-recycling meeting.
Yes, the all-recycling meeting. And I think we have landfill update, too, so we've got all, all the angles. Mr. Mayor, it's November tenth, actually. For that? Okay, November tenth. Okay, uh, any other petitions and communications from council members? Seeing none, we'll go on to old business. Uh, we have one item of old business, it's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Regarding License Agreements, Permits, and Compensation for Use of Public Rights of Way. This was deferred from the meeting on October sixth, um, and so it has been moved and seconded and is before us for discussion. Yeah. Chinowith?
Um, I'd like to make an amendment, um, excuse me, amendment to the ordinance, uh, for those of you who have it before you, um, uh, Mr. Holtz and Mr. Gray and myself are in conversation about a piece of this ordinance, the ordinance changes, and have not come to a conclusion yet, so, um, the spirit of the amendment is to, to pass the rest of the ordinance, except for the pieces that are still in question. So, so my motion is to amend the ordinance to exclude the changes that are, um, under Section twenty dash one thirty-one, from B through D. Those sections are construction activity and special events, B, moving, loading, or unloading merchandise or personal property, C, and changing current of water course or obstructing ditches, et cetera, that's D. Second.
Uh, we have a motion, a second, to delete, um, certain parts of Section twenty dash one thirty-one. Um, is there any discussion? Chinowith?
Actually, I, I would like to make a, in addition to the head amendment, which is that I, um, also come to my attention that there's a desire to remove the changes under, uh, twenty dash one thirty-five E, compensation number two, refers to the University of Illinois, there are also discussions underway. So, just to recap, we would move the entire ordinance except for Section twenty dash one thirty-one A, B, uh, excuse me, B, C, and D, and Section twenty dash one thirty-five E, number two.
And so, what's the upshot of this? So there will be no regulation about, uh, construction companies, uh, encumbering or obstructing any streets or alleys, or there shall be no reg, regulation about people obstructing or encumbering sidewalks, or with merchandise, itinerant merchants, that type of thing?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I think I can address that, there is another part of it.
Is there?
Yes. Uh, if you look at the, if you have your copy of the ordinance in front of you, Section one of the ordinance calls for deleting, um, part of Chapter twenty, that's Article four, Chapter twenty, and, uh, what that Article four contains has been moved in my proposal with some amendments to the portions that Ms. Chinowith is proposing right now, we hold off on for the moment. The Article four, Chapter, uh, Chapter twenty deals with the construction activity, moving, unloading merchandise, um, changing current to water courses and things like that. Because that language has, has some implications that have caused Ms. Chinowith some concerns, and because we haven't yet been able to really resolve those, uh, she approached me before tonight's meeting and asked whether it would be possible to, uh, make this ordinance viable for the moment anyways, without those particular provisions. Um, I, I think it is, and I, I do think it's a good idea to move forward with the ordinance because of the compensation language that it contains elsewhere in it. Uh, but in order to make Ms. But in order to make Ms. Chenoweth's proposal appropriate and to address the concerns you just raised, Mr. Mayor, you would also have to delete out from the very first page of the proposed ordinance that Section One. Section One deletes those portions, proposes deleting those proportions that were then moved to another part. So all those things that you just pointed out will remain in their old form in the current code of ordinances.
The existing law that we have, okay.
The other point that I'd like to address is Ms. Chenoweth's suggestion that the language in, propose Section 20-135E2, which is on Page Five of your draft, let that be left out. That language specifically addresses use of the rights of way within the university's steam tunnels that are in the city's rights of way. I think language along these lines is a good idea. Have discussed it briefly with Mr. Gray. He agrees. But the university people, in particular April Getchis and Lyle Wachtel, would like to discuss that language a little bit and to see what its implications are before we move forward with it, and I think it is appropriate to do that as well.
So then, Ms. Chenoweth, I guess I would ask if you would amend your motion to include deleting Section One in this as well, if that's okay with you and Ms. Pat, would you second on that?
Yes, and that's okay with me.
That's fine with me.
Okay. All right. All that being said, is there any further discussion?
Just one more, we're tweaking this motion. Since we're deleting Section One of the ordinance, so we're leaving existing law the same, I'm looking at Page Three here of the memo. Section 20-131, you want to take out B, C, and D. D is the current language, so it really, if I understand this right, the section, I don't have the code in front of me, but this is moved verbatim from Section 2047, so doesn't that mean that it's?
I think that means that it stays in, because we're deleting, Section One deletes Chapter Twenty.
Right, so this is sort of contradictory, so there's no reason to take D out because we're putting D, because D is part of the law now.
Well.
See what I'm saying? The changes, and what Ms. Chenoweth wants, if I understand correctly the motion I seconded, wants to hold back on three changes, and so that would be 20131B and C, as well as 20135 E2, but 20131D is the law now, so maybe it doesn't matter either way, it just seems that's a double digit, doesn't matter?
I don't think it does.
Is it, do you have a problem with that, or was it just because the number and the change?
No, no, I was, I was taking Mr. Holtz's suggestion that we actually delete D as well, simply because they were kind of all one package, 20, they're the old 20-46, 44, 45, and 47.
But if we, if we pass the motion that way, then that language in D still is current law in Urbana, just in a different section, until we change it. Okay.
All right, that's fine.
Okay. Any other discussion? Y'all understand the amendment is to delete Section One, it's also to delete Section 20-131, B, C, and D, as well as 20135E2. Everybody's understanding? Okay. Any other discussion? There's no other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
That motion carries with, what do we have, five ayes? Okay, we'll go to reports of standing committees. We have a report from the Committee of the Whole. Mr. Hayes, are you the chair? Mr. Hayes?
Committee of the Whole, One A. Ordinance Number 2003-09-103. An ordinance approving the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice for the City of Urbana. Fiscal year 2003, 2004. So move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes, I would like to, I passed out to council members some changes that I'm suggesting. So I'd like to make the following amendments to the analysis of impediments of fair housing choice for the City of Urbana, 2003, 2004. On Page Eight, after the housing market entry, which is, this is in the executive summary, I move that we add the following impediment, and that is, quote, "utility costs, colon, the cost of petroleum is rising and may continue to rise. This is an impediment both because older homes tend to be less energy efficient than newer homes, and paying increasing utility costs can jeopardize paying rent or mortgage." Bullet points under that would be, excuse me, building, build highly energy-efficient homes with funds available to develop affordable housing, and bullet point two, create or support programs providing assistance to increase the energy efficiency of homes. Same page, under Housing Discrimination Complaint Process, as per our last, this is all based on our previous discussion, I would like to amend the document to say, "Identify and address impediments to a timely hearing or settlement of housing discrimination complaints." Page Number Nine, my suggestion is to change the NIMBYism entry to, quote, "NIMBYism, this can be a deterrent to new housing proposals resulting in limited variety of housing choices for the homeless population, Section Eight voucher recipients, and," and this is the addition, "those with prior arrests or convictions." Add a bullet point under this entry, which says, bullet point, "Develop housing for those with prior arrests or convictions," and add the following bullet point under "Access to Affordable Housing: Consider Developing an Affordable Housing Trust Fund." Yes, that's a motion.
Yeah, motion, a second.
Second.
Discussion?
Just to speak to the amendments, the first amendment, I think, is self-explanatory. It explains in it that there's another impediment to housing, fair housing, and that is the difficulty of folks to get access to, say, for example, newer homes. The Housing Discrimination Complaint Process, we discussed last week that, we discussed that there's a, it is a difficult process to go through to bring forward a housing complaint, and yet we are one of the parties, as a city, we have a Human Rights Ordinance and a Human Relations Commission, and I think that it's important for us to add a bullet point in that that says that we are, that we are going, that one of the strategies in dealing with this housing impediment is to address our own process problems in bringing about a timely hearing or settlement in housing discrimination. The reason I have added the change to the NIMBYism piece is in serving on the Homelessness Committee, Continuum of Care Committee, one of the things that we discussed several times on the committee is that we have one category of people which is protected under our Human Rights Ordinance, but has had very, a lot of difficulty in finding housing in the City of Urbana that's affordable or getting access to some of the supportive services and housing programs we have, is prior felony conviction. And stories were told of people who had, as you all may probably know, our single resident occupancy on Greig Street does not allow residents to live there who have any felony conviction, prior felony conviction, which is, I'm not exactly sure how that happened, given that it's in our Human Rights Ordinance, that we don't allow that kind of discrimination, but that's the situation. It makes sense from the perspective of the residents who live around the SRO. On the other hand, there are people who had felony convictions and served time 30 years ago who aren't able to get into their, into that housing. And so we, I wanted to add that piece simply because, as we talk about Section Eight vouchers and discrimination, based on Section Eight vouchers, I think we should also talk about discrimination based on prior arrests or convictions. The last piece refers to Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and that is simply put in there as a discussion piece at this point. I think that we should look at the, given the data that is collected in this document, and that data shows that unemployment is up, that housing, that the average price of a house has gone up $20,000 in 10 years, that the average cost of rent has gone up $200 per month in 10 years, and that we really are seeing kind of a shrinking pool of what is affordable housing for people based on the 80% of median family income or less. And so we should consider what our options are in terms of setting up some kind of long-term plan to address what could become more and more of an affordable housing problem. We have a problem now, and the data suggests that if 10 years from now, the changes that happened in the last 10 years repeat themselves, then we're going to see, I would think, a significant, a fairly significant problem with affordable housing. And so we should look at what our long-term solutions are, and this is one of the potential long-term solutions we could have for that problem.
Is there further discussion?
First, I have a question. Ms. Chenoweth, do you have more copies of this? Because I didn't get one. I just swiped Wyman's, and the clerk doesn't have one.
Oh, I just put one on your desk.
Nope.
It's pink.
What are, no, that's Smile Healthy. Oh, I see, it's on the back of Smile Healthy, okay. Do you have any more, because the clerk doesn't have one?
No, if you could, I could, I'll give Ruth's mine, and then if you could pass.
I'll give my copy to the clerk, okay. I support these amendments. A couple of them were included by the staff in response to conversation last week, and they're outlined in the memo, the creation of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and I think, Mr. Gray, could you refresh your memories, the issue of addressing impediments to timely hearing? There's something similar to that in your recommendations.
Right. I believe on Page Eight of the pages of the AI, at the very back, at the bottom of that, we spoke with our, the staff at the Human Rights Commission, and they indicated that, you know, you could look at that, but they wanted us to just be, take note that you don't want to accelerate it at the expense of not a complete investigation.
Yes, so the language the staff proposed was encouraged to abandon human, actually it says rights that should be relations. The ordinance is Human Rights Ordinance, the commission's Human Relations Commission, to review the process for submitting a discrimination complaint under local ordinance to find ways to shorten the length of time it takes to process a complaint without impacting the quality of the decision-making process. I'm wondering, Ms. Chenoweth, is that, would you like your language in addition, or instead, or?
I would like to keep the language as written by staff, and then withdraw the language that I proposed.
All right. Just speaking a little bit to some of these things, the, on that, the City Council amended the Human Rights Ordinance in, I think it was January of 2000, to put in specific time periods, in an attempt to accomplish the same goal, to shorten the period of time it takes for a complaint to move forward. The essence of those changes was to give the complainant the power to get a determination of probable cause or not probable cause within a specified time period, so it just didn't stay out there forever, and for complainant to have the right to request a hearing if conciliation didn't get resolved within a specific period of time. And I'm not saying that's the be-all and end-all. Those changes protected a complainant from the bureaucracy just dragging something out indefinitely. I think sometimes what can drag things out longer, like I think of a couple of cases that recently were set for hearing and then were settled, was, in those cases, the complainants did not exercise that option of pushing things faster, and it could have been because of what was going on. I don't know, actually, what happened, but I know that they were aware of their right to demand a determination sooner and to demand a hearing sooner, and for whatever reasons, I don't know what they are, because I didn't actually talk with them, they didn't exercise that. So I don't, I don't know what it takes to speed it up, but I do think it's good to have that in the recommendation for talking about impediments to fair housing choice. I certainly think the number-one impediment to victims of housing discrimination filing complaints is the slow process, whether it's federal, state, or local government, in handling a discrimination complaint. There's really, not only is it impossible for the formal process to actually get the person the housing, which is what should be the goal, but it also, it takes so long that I think a lot of people drop out of the process, and a lot of people don't even want to bother to start in the first place. So having it as a goal and giving, asking our commission to have a look at it, I think, would be a good idea. On the subject of the SRO, actually, I start to say, no, you're wrong, but, you know, maybe you are right. The requirement, the reason that they can have any kind of restriction on prior arrest or conviction that is contrary to our ordinance is because the units are subsidized by HUD, and HUD has, the Department of Housing and Urban Development has requirements, like people with felony convictions can't get, most types of felony convictions cannot get into public housing. And the HUD requirement is, I believe, is still, any conviction for, any felony conviction for forcible felony or felony conviction related to drugs, if the person has not lived outside of prison for at least five years without another conviction of any kind felony or misdemeanor for anything related to drugs or violence, they can be excluded from public housing. I think, if I remember correctly, when the, because of NIMBYism, when the proposal was up for the Greigs Apartments, the Homestead Corporation Board voluntarily made a, obviously, but I think is a very, and you would agree, is a very bad concession, to prohibit anyone with a conviction record. I think that's in their rules, which I think they can change, and that's probably something that we should talk with them about. I'm not sure that, you know, what you mean by developing housing for those with prior arrests or convictions, I don't think it would be a good idea, I know X brand this, but my gut reaction is that would not be a good idea to have housing that is exclusively for people with prior arrest or conviction records. I mean, the whole, I mean, besides the whole idea of fair housing is, you know, integration and free choice and people being spread around, one of, one of the requirements for people, with some convictions who are, when they're on parole and whatnot, is to not be hanging around with other people who've gotten in trouble for the same thing they got in trouble for, and I don't know if that's other people who've already paid their debt to society or what, but I think that that would not be a good idea. I mean, what really would be a good idea would be to ensure housing choices for people with prior arrests or convictions. So just, right now, off the top of my head, I'm trying to think of a way to change that option, or that bullet point, because I think that that's a legitimate concern, but the way this particular bullet point reads sounds like something we don't really want to pursue. Maybe, maybe something like, like, develop housing options for those with prior arrests, or something, or expand, or, actually, expand isn't the right word either, but something to, address, address the problem of discrimination against people with prior arrests or conviction would probably be the best thing, if that, if you don't think that's totally different from what you were suggesting.
I tend to agree with Ms. Pat. I think in addition to her points, it's, I think, a dangerous precedent to develop a program specifically for one of the classes that's included in our Human Rights Ordinance. You know, if you do this, then why shouldn't you develop housing for any of the other categories as well? So if this is going to be included, I like Ms. Pat's approach much better than the language that's, that Ms. Chenoweth has presented on this paper here.
Address housing options for people with prior arrest or conviction record?
Talking about, something about addressing the discrimination.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I just, oh, yeah, address housing discrimination against, yeah. How about, address housing discrimination against people with arrest or conviction records?
I would take as a friendly amendment. I would take as a friendly amendment, the address housing discrimination against people with prior arrests or convictions, and to strike under the housing discrimination complaint process, the identify and address impediments to timely hearing, as well as add the bullet point about Affordable Housing Trust Fund. These are all, I've been in Florida for the last week, so I was working from this document, and was unaware that the changes had been made until I picked up my document about 15 minutes before getting here after getting off a plane. So I really apologize for not addressing the specific changes that staff had made, and thanks to Ms. Pat for bringing that to my attention. So I would amend, I would take it as a friendly amendment, those changes, if you would second that, then.
Yes, okay, so the motion that you made, I'm sorry, mayor, can I ask this question? The motion you made is that Section 9 utility costs with two bullet points, and the paragraph on NIMBYism being a deterrent regarding Section 8 and prior arrest, adding a bullet point, address housing discrimination against people with prior arrests and conviction records, and that's all you need to add, because the rest is already in the staff recommendation?
Yes.
Because they were listening last week. Okay, yeah, that's, I seconded it, and I second that change.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion, although this is an amendment to the motion that's on the floor, is that right? This is the amendment, all in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Now to the main motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the court please call the roll?
All the persons, Chenoweth?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Motion carries with five ayes. Mr. Hayes?
Item 1B, ordinance number 2003-10-113, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat, Savannah Green subdivision Phase 5, plan case number 1866-S-03, so move.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, will the court please call the roll?
All the persons, Chenoweth?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Mayor, start.
Yes. Motion carries with five ayes. Mr. Hayes?
Item 1D, resolution number 2003-10-022R, a resolution determining the amounts of money necessary to be raised by the tax levy, 2003, so move.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, will the court please call the roll?
All the persons, Chenoweth?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Mayor, start.
Yes. Motion carries with six ayes. Mr. Hayes?
Item 1D, resolution number 2003-10-022R, a resolution determining the amounts of money necessary to be raised by the tax levy, 2003, so move.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, will the court please call the roll?
All the persons, Chenoweth?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Motion carries with five ayes. Mr. Hayes?
It's all the items tonight for the committee of the whole. The next committee of the whole meeting will be the 27th of October, next Monday.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any special committee reports this evening? Seeing none, we'll go to reports of officers. We're going to report a little bit on the IP, proposed IP sale. Mr. Walden, you want to start it off?
Yeah. Yeah, we thought we should take a few minutes tonight to communicate the facts as we know them regarding the circumstances surrounding the potential sale of IP, and then to sort of recap some of the issues that we identified earlier on regarding reliability. Things regarding the sale of IP are moving very, very fast, and so we want to take this opportunity to sort of give you a verbal oral update as what was happening. No action is required, and we don't have any particular action anticipated at this meeting or the next one, for that matter. As you know, we've been meeting with Champaign Legal Department, our legal department, Champaign Legal Department, and administrators of the two cities since the middle of the summer, early summer, in fact. One of the outgrowths of that, just to recap, was the community-wide forum that was held to discuss issues related to service from Illinois Power. And what we heard at that time was widespread dissatisfaction, really in two main areas, one being customer service problems. Those primarily were in the development, construction area. And then the second one was from, was a reliability issue that we heard a lot from businesses that are more high-tech oriented in this town, that are concerned with the service standards and reliability standards of Illinois Power as it exists. As a result of that, we passed a resolution, this council passed a resolution to file an informal complaint with the ICC. Subsequent to that, IP did take some action, and I'll have the mayor address this in maybe in a minute, and that was to establish a blue-ribbon committee to hear more from the community, elect folks of, regarding the specifics of some of the issues related to reliability, and particularly service, customer service standards. And at least one of those meetings has taken place in a second, perhaps. The mayor, who's our representative on that committee, could update us. We filed the letter with the ICC from the cities regarding the informal complaint. We learned almost immediately thereafter that Dynegy, who is the parent company of IP, announced that it wanted to sell Illinois Power. Probably a week or so after that, we learned that Dynegy announced that they would enter an exclusive relationship with Exelon, which is a holding company, better perhaps known by us, by one of its holdings, ComEd, for exclusive discussions regarding the sale of IP to, from Dynegy to Exelon. What we did at that point was to send a letter. We have provided Dynegy and a letter to the ICC suggesting that City of Urbana, City of Champaign, University of Illinois have worked together. We want to solve the problems related to IP, and we want to explore any other options that were potentially available to us. What happened thereafter was last week, we're springing you totally up to speed, when we received communication and a call from the head of Illinois Power, the CEO, Mr. Larry Altenbaum, who suggested that they wanted to meet with the city staff, as well as with Champaign city staff. And that meeting did occur last Thursday. Mr. Altenbarger held a meeting, attending with him was the fellow who was with us, Sean Shukar, when we passed the resolution, if you remember, he represented Illinois Power, also Barb Beck, their service representative, and a customer management person by the name of Frank Starbody. I met with myself, and Mayor Satterthwaite, and Steve Holt. A similar meeting occurred in the City of Champaign. The CEO indicated that in June 2003, which was prior to our customer service hearing, that Illinois Power, or Dynegy, had made contact with several utility companies, in a sense soliciting the sale to what they would consider logical buyers of Illinois Power. It is our understanding that they received several letters of interest, that Dynegy, with Illinois Power, decided to concentrate on a purchase by Exelon, under their rationale being that Exelon was probably the logical company, since it's in Illinois already, to purchase ICC, and we almost have near contiguous territories. Mr. Altenbaum said that he was not in a position to discuss with city staff any of the alternatives that we had suggested, including, but not limited to, municipalization, because of these exclusive talks only with Exelon. What we did learn is that Dynegy and Exelon have had meetings with the four legislative leaders and also four commissioners of the ICC, when they are, as they are discussing what is to be a purchase, and what the stipulations and what that purchase would look like. Several representations were made to us this week regarding that purchase, one being that they would hope that Illinois Power was a separate subsidiary of Exelon, that the headquarters would still be located in Decatur, that most of the staff and employees would remain, and it was represented to us, for the most part, that this would operate as sort of a separate subsidiary, with most of the same faces and most of the same people. What we also learned was that, that they are proposing legislation, as they met with the key legislators and ICC members. This legislation is for an expedited review by the ICC of the sale, sort of, I guess it's reminiscent of the SBC, maybe a new and improved SBC approach. The fast track would reduce the review period, which is perhaps the opportunity we have to look at, look at this animal from 11 months to six months. We're not really sure of what other proposals would be included in such legislation, although the president and CEO of Illinois Power asked us to support such legislation. We did ask to see the legislation, and we were told that we would not be in a position to review or see the legislation. It is also suggested that the opportunity to review that legislation would probably come only seven to 10 days prior to the time that our state legislature would act on an SBC version of an abbreviated review proposal. So we've asked for copies of the legislation, we were not given copies of the legislation, and we don't really know what's in it. It could be, I don't know, maybe I shouldn't even speculate, we don't know what is in that legislation. And then, I guess, for the most part, it occurred to us, and perhaps Illinois Power at that time, that maybe we're talking to the wrong folks, that we really need to talk to Dynegy, but we have not been able to talk to Dynegy or Exelon at this point regarding the terms and the conditions of the sale, and what our concerns are. And maybe, Steve, if you could maybe pick up from there?
Sure. There's not much left to say, other than, you know, the reason we're bringing this up tonight is because the fast-tracking of all this, there really are basically three types of fast-tracking going on here. One is the fast-tracking of the actual ICC approval process. As Mr. Walden said, that would shorten the time period from the typical 11 months down to a maximum of six months. And we were, although we asked at the meeting with Illinois Power executives, what parts of the process would be removed in order to take out the five months from this 11-month process, we did not receive any real answers about what it is that would be removed. We've heard various rumors from other sources, but have not been able to talk to anybody who has seen the actual legislation. And as Mr. Walden said, when they came to us to ask us to support the legislation, they refused to show it to us. The second part of the fast-tracking is a fast-tracking of rate changes for the period, I think, as I understood it correctly, for rates from 2007 to 2010, and that the approval process for those rate changes would also be shortened to a six-month timeframe. I do not know what that current process would be, but that the timeframe would also be advanced forward by a year or two in order to kind of make it somewhat more contemporaneous, apparently with the approval of the sale itself. Again, if it sounds vague to you, it's because it's vague to me, because I'm repeating to you as clearly as I could understand from what was told to me about what this legislation supposedly says, without having had the benefit of actually seeing the actual language. The third aspect of the fast-tracking here is perhaps the most remarkable, which is that this legislation, which apparently has already been drafted in proposed form, is not being shown to anyone except apparently the four legislative leaders in Springfield and perhaps a couple of the Illinois Commerce Commission members. We have been, when we informed Illinois Power that we could consider supporting legislation of this type, if we knew what it was, number one, and number two, if this were a collaborative process in which the cities would be able to have input into what the legislation says, and would be able to ensure, before it even gets proposed, that it addresses the concerns of the community and the citizens who are essentially captive customers of the utility. We were told that, well, you'll have the opportunity to have input into this legislation after it's released, and it turns out that the proposal for the legislation will not be released until after an announcement has been made about whether or not there actually is a deal between Dynegy and Exelon. That announcement is expected to come, from what they told us at this meeting, it's expected to come sometime at the end of October, and that the legislation would then be made public either simultaneously with that announcement as a proposal, or shortly after that, and then would be pushed through in the November, that is, the fall veto sessions in Springfield. Those veto sessions are held, I believe, in the first and third weeks of November, which leaves somewhere from seven days to maybe about two and a half weeks' time for this thing to happen. When we pointed that out, that it doesn't really give us much of an opportunity for have any kind of an input into the legislation, much less to review it, we were told that, in fact, what they were contemplating was at the shorter end of that timeframe, that is, we're not looking at two, two and a half, three weeks, we're looking at seven to 10 days between the time that this legislation is made public as a proposal and the time that our legislators are expected to vote on it in an informed. So, you know, I suppose what we really want to tell you, besides that, and to let you know just where things are, if you're wondering, is that we still have the concerns that we had before. We have the concerns about Illinois Power's customer service, Illinois Power's reliability. It could be that a portion of those problems arose from the structure and nature of its relationship with Dynegy, which is the current owner, apparently has been the owner for just a couple of years. It could be some other things, we just don't know exactly what those are. But in some ways, you know, we have, we share interests with Illinois Power itself as an entity. Illinois Power and its management team, I pretty firmly believe wants to be a decent company, as they have in the past. Apparently, up to this point, my guess is that they haven't been given the capital resources that they need in order to do that. So one of the concerns that we have is making sure that Illinois Power gets into the hands of what we would consider to be a more responsible corporate entity, that could be Exelon, or it might not be. We just don't know, because we don't know anything about Exelon either. What we do know, though, is not real exciting to us at the moment, because as Mr. Walden mentioned, Exelon is also the, apparently the holding corporation, the holding parent of Commonwealth Edison in the Chicago area. ComEd, I believe, has the highest power electric rates in the state of Illinois, and some of the highest in the nation. So we don't know to what extent a purchase of Illinois Power by Exelon would bring us into that realm of higher rates. We just don't know anything about it really at all. So we're letting you know what we know at this point. We find it quite unusual to be faced suddenly with this fast-track of what really what is essentially secret proposed legislation.
Yes, Ms. Pat?
Thank you. The Illinois Power service area includes, I don't know how many, but quite a few legislative districts. Have you been in touch with any or all of the legislators in this area about this legislation?
Well, I've just started to contact some of our local legislators and let them know that this is coming quickly, if it comes at all. I think it's the first that they'd heard about it.
Um, they, I, I informed them more than they informed me. So, this is something that almost nobody knows about as yet, we're, uh, right at the front of the, um, wave on this thing and nobody else, uh, has even had a, um, any kind of notice of it at all. So, but one of the things that I talked with, with the Municipal League, uh, which is similar to what we did with the IP tree trimming, is talk to other communities in the IP service area, uh, get legislators involved and, uh, see if we can work, uh, that route. So, I think that's, um, you know, one of the tasks before us is to do exactly that. And, um, you know, IP's service area is not a, uh, you know, it's spread around all over the state, it's not contiguous, uh, so we'll have to find out exactly which cities are served by Illinois Power. We know some of them already, Danville, Decatur, Bloomington, Normal, Jacksonville, uh, some others, but, um, um, you know, it's, it's gonna be a task just finding out exactly which communities those are since it is pretty, uh, scatter shot throughout the state, um, where the, the IP service area is. So, but that's something that's, is on the work plan for this week.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Gentlemen?
I, I just have a few questions to try to understand the, the landscape of what's being discussed. We have a franchise agreement with Illinois Power which stipulates that they will be our power provider for how many years?
Fifty, 2018.
To 2018? And so the question, when, uh, Mr. Walden, you explained that it sounded like our chip was, or our lever was, well, we could discuss going to a municipal utility. Is that not a possibility until 2018? We would just discuss that and say, look, if, you know, our, our lever pressure point here is if you don't allow us to have access to a transparent process, then we're going to pursue this route, but there's not really anything we can do about it till 2018. Is that correct?
Not necessarily and I can't, um, tell you with any certainty as to what we can and can't do under the present franchise agreement and whether it require a condemnation action. Uh, we really don't know, uh, exactly what would, what would be entailed and how much it would cost. Real issue would be, of course, valuation of assets and that's a real tricky, tricky issue. Um, and we really don't know as much as we'd like to at this point as to how that would take place, if it could take place. But again, there's, you know, that, that's one issue. The second issue, of course, is, um, you know, what's gonna happen, set that aside for a moment, uh, the other fear, of course, is what's gonna happen under the sale to to the current, uh, concerns that we have and how are they going to be addressed? And are they going to be addressed? Plus, we have the, the other additional issue of, you know, what are the rates gonna be? Are they gonna be ComEd rates? Are they gonna build another nuke? Are they gonna pay for another one? Um, what, what's gonna be the consequences of this sale? Setting aside municipalization for a moment, um, you know, since we first started down this path with local issues, they've expanded dramatically and they're moving very fast and, uh, we do not, I'll let Steve take a shot at this too, but, um, you know, we do not have all the answers. We have very few answers at this point.
So, it's not clear that our complaint, our informal complaint to the ICC will even be transferred to a new owner? That would, that, I mean, would it be possible that our complaint is dead in the water?
We, we don't even know that yet at this point. I, I wrote a letter to the Illinois Commerce Commission, uh, I believe it was at the end of the week before, uh, before last, uh, essentially raising that concern, reminding them that we had had this community-wide forum, that there are serious problems with IP's performance in this community, um, reminding them that we had filed this informal complaint as a result of those and then pointing out that after the time that we filed that complaint, that, uh, Dynegy made its announcement that it's seeking a buyer, uh, and, uh, told them that, uh, we intend at this point to proceed with our informal complaint, uh, and to seek as best we can to bring Illinois Power back up to the level of service that it should be providing. Uh, unless we hear from them that, uh, that the informal complaint process is, is clearly not any longer the appropriate venue. So essentially it was an invitation from me to them to say, look, if we're, if we're in the wrong path here, tell us now because of this new complication added by this purchase and condemnation discussion. My guess would be that in particular if some kind of fast-track legislation goes through, that, uh, you know, perhaps, perhaps whatever informal hearings we would get before the ICC would be addressed, uh, as well, but that, that the real meat of what goes on would be, uh, would be what happens with a purchase of power by whoever the new purchaser is.
I think frankly, we had hoped that maybe in this sale process, once we learned of it with the normal ICC process, which allows for us to intervene and to, you know, perhaps get in, get in there and say, we'd like to have some of these things addressed as a part of this sale, but now, we, you know, the landscape's changing, we don't know what's in this legislation. Is it, is it our process that's cut out to, to expedite this? We don't know. And so, you know, what at first appeared maybe as even a better opportunity to address some of these current concerns may have, uh, maybe diminished considerably if, depending on what's in this legislation and what the ICC is permitted to do.
And who are the four legislators you're referring to?
Well, they were, they weren't named to us, they were just referred to as the, as the big four or the four, the four legislative leaders in Springfield, I assume, it's the, and the Senate and the House, majority and minority leaders each.
But you weren't even given their names?
Well, we know that, uh, it's, um, President, Senate President Enid Jones and Senate Minority Leader Frank Watson, Speaker Mike Madigan, and is it still Lee Daniels is the, uh, minority in the House? I'm not sure.
I think he's been replaced. Um, I can't remember the name, Cross, maybe, it's Tom Cross, the minority leader.
Tom Cross would be the minority leader, uh, so those are the big four. And then, of course, the governor's office is being lobbied as well. So... Well, I don't know if there's anything more that we can report on, although, uh, this is gonna certainly be something to, um, uh, keep our eye on, uh, day by day as this unfolds. And as Steve was saying, it's likely to unfold relatively quickly as, um, Illinois Power was saying that, um, they're, the Exelon-Dynegy timeframe is to have an agreement in principle by the end of this month and then to move forward in the, in the fall session. So, that's gonna be a pass in a matter of days.
I think one of the things that came out of that, uh, special meeting, the question was, was Illinois Power gonna sell? And at that particular time, they, uh, stipulated that, they didn't think so, but they couldn't let anybody know what was going on. So, the follow-up question was, all of these concerns that, uh, this special committee had, would Illinois Power continue to, uh, press forward to try to eliminate, you know, the service and, uh, dependability? And reply was that, there was an individual there from ICC, you know, taking notes and everything else, so that would be one thing that we could follow up on to make sure that, you know, they do take care of the complaints regardless of who, uh, who the new owner is.
Well, that's true. I mean, we still have those issues. I mean, the, the sale, particularly to Exelon, brings up the points that Steve was, uh, making, you know, what are our rates gonna be? Um, you know, Illinois Power over the years has divested itself of the power generation side, um, but Exelon is in the power generation side, so if they decide to build a new generator, are we gonna be, um, footing the bill for that even if we may not get any of the power from it? So, there are a lot more issues that this sale brings in and, uh, the reliability issues and the customer service issues that, uh, we had with Illinois Power before we knew of the sale. So, well, we'll keep everybody posted unless, if there are any other questions. Okay? Any other reports of officers? Seeing none, we'll go on to new business. We have one item under new business and that is an ordinance approving a final plat, a final subdivision plat for Somerset subdivision phase four. This is plan case number 1867-S-03. Mr. Kowalski?
Thank you. This is a request for a final plat submitted by the Flessner Development Company, uh, final plat for 34 lots. Um, this plat would dedicate Field Crest Drive and connect to Three Development to the East. Um, the site is not located in the city limits right now, but it is under an annexation agreement to be annexed when it is contiguous. Uh, last year, council approved a preliminary plat for this 12-acre site and also a general area plan for the 100 acres to the, um, west that is under common ownership. Uh, the plat has been sent out for, well, it has been, has received agency review from the necessary utility companies, um, as well as Public Works and, um, everything seems to be in line and is consistent with the preliminary plat. Your staff report outlines summary of findings and also your options to either approve or deny the plat. Staff does recommend approval of the plat. I'd be happy to answer any questions and I see Don Flessner is in the off, uh, audience if there's any questions for him as well.
Ms. Gentlemen?
What's the nearest park to Somerset and how far, uh, from the, to the proposed, Somerset Phase Four and how far is it away?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I could've figured that out, but I, I don't know off the top of my head.
Has the park district approached?
Probably the Dog Park.
The Dog Park?
Yeah.
Has the park district, um, approached the city about green space in this area? Uh, it looks like you're talking about 12 acres plus potentially another 100 that would be developed in the future?
We have, um, we have talked to Mr. Flessner, um, about trying to incorporate some open space in the, the 100 acres to the west. The, uh, current general area plan does not show any open space there, but, um, we had talked at least informally a year or two ago about trying to incorporate some, some open space in that development.
But this plat is just specifically for the 12 acres we see before us?
Right.
I would just, I, I guess I would urge, uh, Mr. Flessner to work with the city to ensure that there's adequate open space for the future residents of, of this neighborhood that, that he's developing in conjunction with the city.
Is there any, any other questions? Any other questions? The motion would be in order?
So move.
Second.
A motion of second, any discussion? There's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
All the persons, gentlemen?
Yes.
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 That motion carries with five eyes and there being no further business to come before us this evening. We stand...